Welcome to the Monday's February 17th Cabarrus County Board of Education Legislative Meeting. We are glad that you are all here. I am going to call this meeting to order. And our first item here is our opening ceremonies, which have got introductions and greetings. So we'll start with introducing the folks that are here at the table. And we have invited our county commissioners out of collaboration. This is a team effort. So thank you, Mr. Pittman, for being here, Ms. Lindsay, Chairman Meeser. We have Board Members Pam Escobar, Board Member Melanie Freeman, Vice Chair Greg Mills, myself, Rob Walter, our Superintendent John Kapicki, Board Member Sam Tredaway, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Shannon Lancaster. And our esteemed guests today, we have Representative Grant Campbell, the 83rd District, right? Representative Jonathan Allman with the 73rd, and then Representative Brian Etcheveria with the 82nd. And our SROs tonight, and thank you for being here, we have Deputy Hartzell, and we have SRO from ATL and Elementary School Scott Bryson. So with that, we will move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our next item is setting our agenda. It is a limited agenda, pretty simple, but I need a motion from a board member in a second. So a motion by Ms. Escobar, do I have a second? Second, by Mr. Tredaway. All in favor of setting our agenda tonight, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, we have our agenda, so moving right along. Introductions, really, this meeting here is all about collaboration. It's about relationship building, information sharing, and really allowing our representatives to understand what our Cabarrus County Schools' priorities are on legislative front. Hopefully, we can find some collaboration, common ground by the end of tonight. But again, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I would like to, first off, give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, kind of just tell us what's going on so far. I mean, you've only been there a short time, but let's go a little bit about yourself, what's going on, any committees that you're on, or any legislative priorities or something that we should be aware of. So I will start with Representative Campbell. Welcome.
Thanks. I appreciate you having us here tonight. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Grant Campbell. I am the State House Representative for District 83, which I straddle two counties. I have Northwest Cabarrus County, kind of the Kannapolis area, and I have Southern Rowan County, the China Grove, Enochville, Landis area. My background, I've been a physician in this area for over 25 years. I'm also a former Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Army, where I served as a trauma surgeon as well. After 10 successful years of avoiding running for office, I finally gave up and won, so bless you all for having poor representation in Raleigh now. But we have got our committee assignments. My committees are General Appropriations, Appropriations for Health and Human Services, Healthcare Committee, Homeland Security, Military and Veterans Affairs Committee, and Oversight Committee. Obviously, if you look at my committee assignments and my background, my legislation is probably going to be a bit heavy towards healthcare and veterans issues. I was hoping to be on higher education. I'm the former Vice Chairman of the State Board of Community Colleges as well, but they merged the Universities Committee and the Community Colleges Committee, so that did cut the number of seats in half, so I was not able to do that. In terms of kind of hitting the ground running, I have had a few bills that have already been filed. Some are for educational opportunities for veterans, and also some tax relief for veterans. We are working on several healthcare bills that we're going to file. Number one is probably that we're looking at restricting the number of prior authorizations that patients have to go through for medical treatment. We're looking at speeding up credentialing for physicians and mid-level providers that are moving in from other states to address our healthcare shortages as well. Obviously, I'm going to be pretty active on the community college front as well, but I think our philosophies are all the same, and our staff know this, is that if someone comes to our office and they're from home, it doesn't matter who we're meeting with, you guys go to the front of the line. I will ask people to leave so that I can talk to you, because in the end, you guys are who we work for. Let me give you my office number real quick, is 919-715-2009. My legislative assistant is Andrew Stiffl, S-T-I-F-F-E-L. He is a proud product of Cabarrus County Public Schools, and his email is andrew.stiffl@nclg.gov. Please reach out at any time, call or email if there's anything you need, if there's something that we need to be doing, something that we need to not be doing, or something that we need to be doing better. Please don't hesitate, that's what we're here for. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Ms. Representative Allman, welcome. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Allman, representing the 73rd District that is downtown Concord, over to Afterton Village, and the northern half of the county. In my previous life, I was the controller for a management group that operated franchise restaurants, so I have a background in P&Ls, financial statements, and small business. We did just get our committees recently. I'm on Appropriations, Appropriations for HHS, Insurance, Regulatory Reform, Election and Campaign Finance Reform, and Judiciary III. It's been busy up there recently. Unfortunately, we're not going to be up there this week because of the weather, but committees have started, bills are flying through, so it is a good time. I know for myself, I've mostly been working on building relationships, you know, just like I'm doing around here. A lot of things happen up there because of the relationships and the people that you know, so that's my main focus right now. I will have some bills be coming through the closer we get to the deadlines. If you guys need to get in touch with me, our office number is 919-715-8361. And my legislative assistant is Jacob Arthur. His email is jacob.arthur@nclg.gov, and that's about it.
And you are also a parent of kids at Cabarrus County Schools.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. So one of the reasons that I feel like that I am in this role right now, you know, a lot of doors got open for me through this process. I have twin boys who are, just turned seven last Wednesday, and they are mostly nonverbal, so they are getting a... They're at WM Irving, and the teachers and staff there are doing an amazing job. We are very happy with everything that they're learning, the progress that they're making, so I think that that's one of the focuses, I know for myself, that I'm going to be focused on, is how do we get kids healthy? You know, we have a real problem with childhood disease, autism, all sorts of things like that. So I think that's going to be the main mission for me up there, is how do we figure out how to get these kids healthy through that process? I think, you know, I had confirmation of that mission when Robert Kennedy got approved, so it'll be interesting to see how quickly things move in that front, so thank you, Ms. Walter.
Thank you. Representative Etcheveria, we're glad that you're here.
I'm grateful to be here, super grateful. Brian Etcheveria, Representative District 82. My office, obviously, my wife is my amazing legislative assistant, so you have a fast track to me through her. I'm super grateful. She is here, Cynthia Etcheveria. Like they said, you know, we got our committee assignments. I'm with Finance, also in a subcommittee for the occupancy tax, along with reg reform, oversight, and it's a... It's been an experience. Everyone is still okay, because no one has voted yet. So, you know, the hallways are good. It's, you know, whether Democrat or Republican, everyone is very pleasant, from staff, the staff is nonpartisan, they are dynamic. I was super, super comforted by the machinery there to get things done. My priorities have been the property taxes. So I have a bill that I'm hoping to file soon, which will address property taxes in North Carolina from A to Z, because we've all experienced that. Additionally, I brought this along with me, I won't go through it all, but this is a teacher retention and recruitment bill, where we're overhauling the pay structure for teachers, and how do you recruit them, how do we get them from other states? Additionally, how do we rehire retired teachers? You know, because we lose them to private schools. So they get the retirement, and then a private school all of a sudden can afford them, well, so can we. So we want to make sure that we keep our talent, those teachers that have loved us for the last 25 or 30 years, that they continue to have the opportunity to love our students. Additionally, I have a son, he's back here, he's at RCC. So the public school system is important to us. It has been a great service. I believe that our... That offering for early college is one of the most dynamic in the country. It has been a great value, not just to my family, but to a lot of families, particularly in minority and underserved communities. So it's something that we have to continue to do, and it's something that you guys have architected, and I'm grateful to be a part of advancing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So our next item here is presentation. We have our staff that has worked very hard on coming up with presentations to explain what our legislative agenda priority items are. I think on your desk, we do have our legislative agenda, and we also have our copies of the slides. But this year, we have had a legislative committee who has solicited all the board members to get their input, has worked with our staff, has looked at other legislative agendas from different organizations, different school systems, to devise this, and they've gone and they've summarized it on areas that had common ground, and then they try to prioritize it. So not everything is going to be on here that covers the whole gamut, but our top items are, and with that, I'd like to... Who is going to be presenting first? I'll introduce our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. So again, just echoing the sentiments across the board this evening, thank you very much for taking the time, both on the legislative end, to Dr. Campbell, Mr. Allman, Mr. Etcheveria for being here, and also to our county commissioners who are present as well, Mr. Meeser, Mrs. Lindsay, and Mr. Pitt. We appreciate you all being here this evening to participate in this meeting. What you're going to see is the legislative agenda that has been put together thus far from our Board of Education, and I appreciate the help that they have given and the input they've given to put this legislative agenda together, and also the leadership of our Vice Chair Greg Mills and Melanie Freeman, who have led this charge in terms of these priority areas. So I want to say, this isn't... This is not an all-inclusive list, and it can change over the course of the year. You have your long session, your short session, and we have met individually with each one of you, and we, again, we thank you for the time you've given us, and we hope to continue to form those relationships and build strong lines of communication, so that we can be a resource for you, and as well as you can continue to advocate for us. We are very sincere, we say that, we look at it as a service model for us, that we are here to serve you as well, so please do not hesitate to reach out to us and use us as a resource for any information you may need, as bills come across your desk, or you have ideas, or things you want to bounce off us. We want to make sure that we keep that partnership alive and well, and that we're helping you as much as you were helping us up in Raleigh, so thank you for that. What you're going to see tonight are, as on the agenda, you'll see the five legislative areas that are priorities for us, that our board has identified as areas that they would like to have you advocate for them. You've already spoken to some of them in your introduction already, so it's great to see that you're already on top of some of these issues for us, so we thank you for that. But the five priority areas that you see, that is a summary of them, and what you will see in a moment is the incredible staff that I'm blessed to be a part of, participate this evening, and each one of them will present each one of these items. So you'll see Recruiting and Retaining Quality Staff, Strengthening the Educational Funding Model, Reforming the Accountability Model, Increasing Flexibility and Regulatory Reform, and Enhancing Student Safety and Wellness. So each one of the cabinet members here, the administrative staff, will present those items to you in a short presentation through a PowerPoint presentation. I would ask, as we go along, if you have questions, to ask those questions and make an interaction, if there's something we can answer as we're going through it, or clarifications, if you have a question or recommendation, we like this to kind of be free-falling and get your input as well as we go through it. So without further ado, our first presentation, Stephen, is going to begin with Dr. Williams, who is the Chief of Human Resources, and he will talk to our group about recruiting and retaining quality teachers. Again, I thank everyone for being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki, and legislators. Tonight, I am honored to represent our district, and more importantly, our teachers and staff, as we share the importance of recruiting and retaining quality teachers and staff. Investing in competitive teacher compensation models based on market-driven salaries, funding innovative career pathways such as advanced teaching roles, improving benefits, and reforming licensure processes are the keys to attracting and retaining skilled educators, strengthening our workforce, and improving student outcomes in Cabarrus County. North Carolina trails the nation and our region in teacher compensation. While I understand there are some studies that have presented that try to capture teacher salaries by including the cost of benefits, I contend two things. One, those benefits are generally universal across states, and while benefits are important and are a way of retaining talented employees, they do not always become a motivator until salaries reach those market levels. In all honesty, in our district, our principals have done a phenomenal job continuing to staff their schools despite lagging salaries for both beginning teachers and our veteran expert teachers that do not align with both the market and an increased cost of living. The graphic on the screen shows that our county commissioners and Cabarrus County Schools' Board of Education have made a committed effort to increase our local supplement, but our current teacher staffing crisis cannot be solved at a local level. It requires state legislative action. This salary level for Cabarrus County, while slightly above the state average, continues to put our educators in a position where their pay does not meet the minimum for someone to live comfortably in our county based on the cost of living. On a very anecdotal level, I checked today, and from 2000 to 2010, as a young, single teacher, I rented an apartment off of Green Street near JM Freese, before my wife decided to take me in. That apartment rented over that 10-year run for between $575 and $600 a month, for a 675-square-foot apartment at the Terry Moore Apartments. I looked that same apartment up today, and that same 675-square-foot apartment is renting for $1,300 a month. If you just put in the $600 a month from 2007 and adjust that for inflation, that inflation rate would take it to about $980 a month, so we are approximately just over $300 above the inflation rate, just as one example of cost of living in Cabarrus County. To be clear, while we deeply appreciate that local commitment to recruiting and retaining quality teachers, our state must also make a commitment to fair, market-driven compensation, particularly in counties like Cabarrus, that have cost of living that are increasing faster than other counties in our state. The National Bureau of Labor Statistics ranks North Carolina 47th out of 50 states in average teacher salary, behind Virginia, Georgia, Florida, Louisiana, Alabama, and South Carolina, and ahead of only West Virginia, South Dakota, and Mississippi, states which all have substantially lower cost of living rates. Further, the spending power of our teacher salaries have fallen substantially over the past 27 years, something that we have tracked in these legislative agenda meetings for the past four years that I've been in this position. When adjusted for inflation, a first-year teacher's salary today is worth $3,720 less per year than it was in 1998, and the salary for our most dedicated veteran teachers has decreased 44% in spending power over that same time period, with a whopping $25,020 decrease in spending power. If the state had committed to simply keep up with inflation, our 25- to 30-year veterans right now would be at a salary of approximately $81,000 per year. In North Carolina, however, teachers can only increase their pay from beginning to end of their career by less than $15,000, and they have no increases in their salary after year 15 presently. Now, I recognize arguments that say staying with the cost of inflation wasn't possible, however, our neighbors to the south have done just that. Our district is in direct competition with York County, South Carolina, where salaries, including a local supplement that is competitive with ours, far exceeds what teachers here can make based on state legislation that has kept up with inflation and rewards teachers for increased education and credentials. The average salary in Fort Mill is $7,900 above Cabarrus. The first-year salary there is $3,670 above ours, and a teacher with a master's degree and 30 years of experience in Fort Mill clocks in at $81,609, right at the inflation rate, and $14,609 above the maximum that a teacher in Cabarrus County can make. To exacerbate the problem, North Carolina's legislature passed legislation that does not award a supplement for a master's degree earned after 2014, capping many of our teachers closer to $19,000 below what they can make just 37 miles away across the state line. For context, that amount of money is the equivalent of a house payment. In addition, while North Carolina's legislature has approved programs like advanced teaching roles to begin to explore merit pay for our best educators that have an increased impact on students, the legislature also did not provide full funding for that program. Cabarrus County Schools is in our first year of the Advanced Teaching Roles Grant, which is valued at $1.5 million to support innovative staffing at 16 schools in our district. Under this Advanced Teaching Roles model, our teachers, who are most effective, have an opportunity to reach more children and support their colleagues who are developing their skills in return for additional pay. The results across the state have been outstanding, and our early results here in Cabarrus County are very promising. In our grant proposal, we plan to add eight schools for the 25-26 school year, but we have been notified by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction that they are not sure they will have adequate funding to support the growth of the program or provide the stipends for outstanding teachers who qualify. Failure to fund this program would stymie a clear positive impact on student outcomes and achievement. For example, in our district, Hickory Ridge Elementary School, since the beginning of this school year, using an advanced teaching role model with an outstanding teacher leading it, has seen a 7.8% increase in third-grade reading achievement. Reberta Road Middle School, as of now, leads the district in its percentile gain in both reading and math, and JM Robinson High School has seen a 16.9% gain in average student achievement in Math III. It is imperative, we believe, that the legislature take action to fully support and fund this work. In addition, North Carolina must take steps to become more attractive to teachers. While competitive pay is a component, our state also continues to maintain antiquated legislation related to teacher licensure. Both teachers who are new to the profession and veteran teachers who are moving here from out-of-state face complex and complicated licensing processes that are discouraging. We believe is it important to expand licensure reciprocity for candidates holding clear out-of-state licenses, that we update testing requirements for those same candidates, and review the testing requirements for beginning teachers to ensure that the very expensive testing that they pay for, that we ask them to take, should be... should actually measure the skills possessed by highly effective teachers. We believe licensure should be a straightforward process designed to encourage folks to teach, not a series of hoops to jump through that discourage them from doing so. To give two examples, teachers who hold clear licenses from Pennsylvania, this is one we've dealt with quite a bit this year, folks that are coming to us with clear licenses from Pennsylvania do not qualify for a license in North Carolina, because our legislation requires teachers to have completed a portfolio during their student teaching experience that is not required by Pennsylvania. As a result, veteran teachers from Pennsylvania who hold those clear licenses and who have a proven track record of success must pay to complete a task that is required of 19-year-old college students. Secondly, teachers who would like to work with children with special needs must pass a barrage of tests that are not related to special education. These are two areas that are examples where licensure could be vastly simplified to encourage candidates to join the profession. Finally, neighboring states have passed legislation that overrides requirements that retired teachers must sit out for six months after retirement and face an income and hours cap, provided these teachers are willing to return to work in low-performing schools or those schools serving students who are more at risk. At present, retirees in North Carolina are discouraged from returning to the classroom. They're not allowed to work for six months after they retire, and they can only return with part-time hours. We believe these retirees could fill very important roles in our children's lives and should have the opportunity to return quickly and at full pay. Ultimately, therefore, we believe that competitive pay is a direct reflection of the value we place on education. To that end, we ask that the legislature continue to consider market-driven salary and supplemental pay increases for all teachers, to improve starting pay for beginning teachers, and fairly compensate veteran teachers, reinstitute supplements for master's degrees, reform and simplify licensure processes, fully fund advanced teaching roles, and provide other innovative bonus incentives for performance, years of service, and teaching in low-performing schools, and finally, create a plan that allows retired teachers to return to the workforce.
Are there any questions for Dr. Williams?
Thank you for that presentation. I just, I want to applaud you guys, I know we talked about this a little bit already. Some of the lessons learned, we got from the nursing shortage and workforce development there, and I like to see that this is not occurring here, is I think that I'm all for recruitment. I got no problem with recruiting, but when we were dealing with the nursing shortage, we, I think, did recruitment almost exclusively at the expense of retention, and the process that we kind of created was that we made a larger portion of our nursing pool inexperienced, and we took away incentives for the veteran bedside nurses that are not only taking great care of the patients, but they're mentoring the new nurses that come in. I agree with you, it makes zero sense to me that master's pay is gone. We have created a situation where there... It's not a glass ceiling, it's a concrete ceiling. And I think that, forgive me my military metaphors, but one of the biggest ways to destroy a military is to run out their senior non-commissioned officers, and I think that we've somewhat advertently and inadvertently created that situation here. I appreciate this kind of dual emphasis on retention, I think that that's going to be a big part of it. We talked a little bit about, you know, the recruitment from other states, especially veteran teachers. I think that we can probably roll that into, we're working on an interstate medical personnel compact, we're looking at one that's an interstate social worker compact, to kind of streamline that credentialing for people moving in. There's no reason we can't do that for teachers as well. We have to do it smartly, but we got to make it brief and efficient. Now, I will say, and I think we all agree, that longevity doesn't always equal competency, so there is going to have to be a competency measurement with this as well, but we have this temptation in politics, that if a little bit is good, then a dump truck load must be fantastic. And so, let's find a single, efficient way to measure that competency instead of 16. It looks good on paper, but in the end, I think it's killing us with recruitment, so these are not tough sales that you're saying, and I get it, and I just want to applaud you guys for that emphasis on retention as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Williams. The next presentation will center on strengthening education funding, and that will be presented by Dr. Roth and Amy Jewell.
Amy Jewell and I are going to do this component of the presentation, which is our second priority, strengthening education funding. And we want to make the point that North Carolina must reform and expand its education funding model to ensure equity and support for rapidly growing school districts like Cabarrus County, where inadequate per pupil funding... Cabarrus County, where inadequate per pupil funding threatens our student success and access to essential resources. I want to point out three things with this model that we have for supporting and funding our schools in North Carolina. First of all, for North Carolina, for 2023-24, Cabarrus County Schools ranked 114th out of 115 school districts in North Carolina in per pupil expenditures. In 22-23, we ranked last. I want to call your attention to the chart on the right. These are districts that are in our region. And as you can see, you can see the amount that we receive from the state, the federal government, our local government, and then the total, and then what is that rank out of the 115 school districts in the state? If you look at Cabarrus County Schools, we rank 114th. If you look at Union County Schools, they rank 113th. I want to call your attention to the differences between the two counties. Even though Union County and Cabarrus County Schools are closely ranked, and there's only a difference of $307 in local budget for PPE. If you multiply the difference of $307 by 35,000 students, that's a difference of more than $10 million. If you look at the total, and you just go to the column, the last column there, that's a difference of $168 between Union County and Cabarrus County. That's a difference of $5.8 million. The other thing we want to point out is that the North Carolina funding formula for school districts is based on the average daily membership. The average daily membership is an average enrollment of the first 40 days of school. We have a very, our rapidly growing school district. So if you think about that, our 40th day enrollment is probably going to continue to grow, even though what we get for that school year is based on the average from day one to day 40. And the last thing I want to point out is that supporting the needs of our exceptional childrens has contributed to a budgetary constraint in each of the last two years. And I'm going to talk about that in some slides going forward, but I just want you to note that that's due to some of the challenges we have with teacher vacancies and related services vacancies. And now I'm going to turn it over to Amy Jewell, and she's going to talk about our CISP support.
Thank you, and good evening. I am very grateful for the opportunity to speak with you, and thank you for coming tonight. I was really delighted to listen to you introduce yourselves because I heard care for healthcare, for behavioral support, for investing in our staff and public schools. And so, that is a great place to start this conversation. When we talk about funding, I want to kind of paint a picture of what that looks like at the ground level. So, in my role, I do a lot to support student and families. I rely very heavily on some of our amazing community partnerships to be able to bring those services here to Cabarrus County Schools. So, we have a term called specialized instructional support personnel, also known as CISP. We use this term to describe our school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists. Nurse are often also lumped into that group, however, we're very lucky in this county where we have a nurse at every school from the Health Alliance, so I'm going to focus on our employees here. Our recommended ratio, these are from our governing bodies, for schools counselors, it's 1 to 250, school social workers, 1 to 250 or 1 to 50 in a high need school, 1 to 500 for school psychologists. That middle column is the North Carolina ratio per DPI as of December of 2024. And this is where we're sitting at in Cabarrus County Schools right now. So if you look at social workers alone, we are over four times the recommended ratio to address the mental health and social needs of our students and families. We need state funding to increase CISP. I'm going to kind of go through these a little bit, toggle back and forth. We rely very heavily on grants. We are grateful for the grants that we have, however, they are not sustainable. They are competitive, they tend to pit school districts and disciplines against each other. Right now, we have a FAST grant, and it has been an absolute blessing. It is a recruitment and retention for school counselors and school psychologists. It expires in December of 2027. With those funds, we've been able to bring on a full-time school social worker for one of our highest need elementary schools that otherwise would not have one. We've been able to bring on a lead mental health social worker who supports all of the very high need cases throughout the county. So, our students who may be coming in and out of mental health hospitals, who need to help families navigate very complex systems as they're trying to get services, she provides direct care and case management for those families. We also have two counseling coordinators that are funded with that money who provide support to every single school in this district on a rotating basis. In addition, those grants help us pave equity. So, those professions I showed you before, psychologists, social workers, and counselors, they're all paid on different scales. So you already have inequity there. So we use some of this FAST grant money to make up for those inequities, as well as try to provide very evidence-based, comprehensive training, so we can make sure that our folks are able to meet the significant mental health needs in the school district. So although these are very well-intended, we are still facing a lot of unfunded mandates. So, in 2020, North Carolina adopted the school mental health policy, which is amazing on paper. They talk about increasing your CISP, making sure that there is human trafficking training, child abuse and neglect prevention programs, mental health services at every school, suicide risk assessments, threat assessments, which our staff are doing daily, sometimes multiple times a day. The intention of that policy is fantastic, but they are all unfunded mandates. So those numbers I showed you with CISP, they're taking this on and making sure that we meet every single piece of that criteria, as well as now mandatory state reporting that has to be submitted on September 15th each year. So, as we're going through this, I would just really ask that you consider the equity in these professions. Without equity in pay and improving the CISP ratios, our students are suffering because even if our best people are working as hard as they can, as fast as they can, with ratios like that, you're only touching the very tip of the iceberg. So you might be addressing the students who are in immediate crisis in your school, but we have got to get back to prevention and intervention if we want our students to be well, and, right, and matriculate through the school system in a healthy and safe way. And then lastly, our staff are leaving the field, right? You talk about turnover, you talk about retention, it's tough, they're burning out. We need to provide them more support. It's really, really important. On my own team, I had quite a few people leave last year, not one left for another district. They left the field because they can take their advanced clinical license, right, and serve the community in a lot of other ways. So I just wanted to share a few data points as examples. So last year, we collected data for enhanced mental health services, meaning outside of the traditional scope of our school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, when they are providing specific mental health services directly to students or families, we track that. So last school year, our CISP provided mental health services to over 12,000 unique students in the county. And most of those were individual counseling sessions, referrals to school-based therapy. We are very grateful for our community partners who are willing to come in and help support our students, referrals for telehealth. So, we have a fantastic partnership with Atrium, and they've grant-funded quite a few of our students who would not otherwise be able to receive mental health services. Suicide risk assessments, threat assessments, acute mental health hospitalizations, and of course, parent education sessions. We're a little over halfway through this school year, and we've already almost reached that number. So again, I say, can you imagine what we could do if we were properly staffed or almost appropriately funded? How many students we could reach? How much closer we could get back towards prevention? We've got to move back towards prevention if we want our students to succeed. Also, I wanted just to share some numbers about these grants and this non-sustainable funding. So, McKinney-Vento is an act that protects the stability and the safety of homeless students attending school. Because their lives outside of school could be very transient, we have laws that we abide by to make sure that if a student can, that we can get a student to school, we can have them during the whole day, and if they're moving again, we find a way to bring them back to their school. They have a right to be in their school of origin, get transportation, get meals, get tutoring. And so we rely on grants for our McKinney-Vento services. Those grants repeat in cycles every three years. So three years ago, we had about 500 homeless students that we were serving. Last year, we ended the school year with 833 homeless students that we were serving, and our funding pot did not change. So it's this idea that we continue to do more with less, and it is getting more difficult. And we need legislation to address the support that our schools need. Talk about funding, I wanted to share a little bit of what we're experiencing right now locally. So in 2011, the state of North Carolina lifted the cap on the number of charter schools that can open up in the state. So since then, the number of charter schools in North Carolina has almost doubled. At the bottom here is just a quick snapshot of the schools that many of our students go to within Cabarrus County. So if you go back to that per pupil expenditure Dr. Roth was just sharing before I started speaking, our students are funded at a rate of $11,039 per student, okay? And then I have the breakdown there of your state, local, and federal contributions. With 1,944 students last year going to charter schools, that is an estimated $21.6 million that was diverted away from Cabarrus County Schools to charter schools. And it's not really comparing apples to oranges, right? Charter schools have different regulations. So where we have to provide transportation, free and reduced lunch, exceptional children services, licensed instruction, not all charter schools have to do that. They don't necessarily have to provide transportation, exceptional children services, free or reduced lunch, and I think about only half of their staff have to be licensed. So what we find is that, on an average, about 10% of students who leave us to go to charters, who take that money with them to be educated, they return. But we do not see that money again for that school year. So if we really lose about, or if we really, right, send these students to charters, that's where they go, and then about 10% are coming back, with the numbers we have, that's about $2.2 million that we are missing to serve our students when they return to us, to be educated by Cabarrus County Schools. So again, it's that challenge of we keep having to do more with less. And if we could reinvest some of these efforts into public education, think about how amazing we can do to serve our students and our families.
So Amy was talking about how we're having to do more with less, and this has happened within our exceptional children's department in the last two years. We have had a challenge hiring our EC teachers and retaining EC teachers and staff, but we're also having challenges hiring and finding occupational therapists, speech and language therapists, and we've had to, we've had multiple vacancies in each of these areas, but we still have to provide services to our EC students. So in order to do that, we have to contract out these services to different agencies. Well, these agencies charge us 40% more than what a full-time staff member. So it is eating into our budget. And when you look at the unfunded locally portion of what we have to pay to serve our students, it's $3.7 million. And that's coming out of our local budget, and it has increased in the last two years because of these vacancies and what we've tried to do. I also want to point out that it does cost more to support our EC students. They have more things, as you can see from the chart here, so it's about $2,000 per student in local funds that we have to go above and beyond our general education costs to ensure that we are serving them appropriately. And I also want to point out that the state funding formula for EC states that if you, you can only have 13% EC students. If you have more than 13% EC students, it's capped. So, we have to serve everyone, and we want to serve everyone. Fortunately, for the last couple of years, we've been right under that threshold, but we don't know from year to year where we're going to fall in that area. So that is another concern that we have, and there is a per pupil cap of $5,300 per EC student from the state that is within that 13%. I also want to share some information about our multilingual learners, and these are formerly known as English language learners, but now the state has referred them to multilingual learners. And I wanted to share some data with you that goes back to 1994. And in 1994, in Cabarrus County, we had 93 multilingual learners. We had three tutors at the time that served these students, and we had two languages. So you can just imagine how much we have changed in 30 years. In 2004, we had 1,100 multilingual learners, 30 certified multilingual teachers, which was at a ratio of 1 to 37, 44 languages. At our October headcount in 2024, we now have 3,768 multilingual learners. We have 40.5 certified teachers at a ratio of 1 to 93. The state recommendation is 1 to 67 for the caseload of each teacher, and we have 72 languages that we're addressing. And we have some other data there for your information of how we've grown and changed over the last, if you can imagine, back to 1994, what our district looks like. So I want to wrap up with a few points. Adequate funding is the bedrock of a high-functioning public education system, supporting everything from infrastructure to student services. So, we would like to move from an average daily membership funding model to one that utilizes actual month-end enrollment at the end of that 40-day period. Increase our state support of EC students by dropping the 13% population cap and shifting to an excess cost model that maybe caps net local expenditures at $1,000 per EC student. And increase state funding for specialized instructional support personnel, which Amy was talking about, our social workers, our counselors, our school psychologists. And additional funding for additional multilingual certified personnel. It's very difficult for them to meet the needs of all their students when they're serving 93 students each year. And that's it for our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions? Grant?
I'm sorry, you guys are going to learn I'm a bit of a nerd, but I have a couple of questions. Some of these are logistical, but before that first one, from the ADM funding model, when you said the actual month-end enrollment, is it a particular month you're looking at? Is it a rolling? And the reason I'm asking is it kind of seems like this kind of first 40 days, it's kind of like the trap of, it's just a newer version of funding and arrears trap, and it seems like this is a model that punishes growing counties more than non-growing, which we're growing more than most. And I just want to, before I get to those other, can you, the actual month enrollment, can you explain to me what that means and when that would occur?
So the, so the school starts, it's the 40th day of school. So it's counting not weekends, obviously, but the day, from the day you start school to the 40th day is what they base your funding for, for that year.
Right.
So you don't even get your money until, you know, even later in the school year.
There's probably a reason this doesn't make sense, but I'm going to put it out there anyway, is that what would be the fault of like having like an initial enrollment funding, but then maybe have the opportunity for a true-up mid-year? I'm just worried about this first 40 days in a rapidly growing county.
That's a great point, because our population continues to grow throughout the school year. It just doesn't stop on that 40th day.
Okay.
Historically, they use the 40-day, the 40-day membership number is the number they historically have used. To your point, one of the things that we are dealing with is, and you mentioned the funding and arrears model, the growth is the question for us, because once the 40-day number goes in, we can grow by 1,000 students, or 500 students, or 200 students, we're not going to get that money. So to your point, a moment in So, to your point, a moment in time during the year where they might make us whole would be truly beneficial to us in terms of funding the, I'm going to use the word appropriate way. It's not that it's, it's not that it's inappropriate, but it would be more of a true figure as to the amount of kids that we're actually serving. Because day 40 for us is a, is a number, right? But day 90 is not the same number as day 40. So, the growth factor is where we're, we're struggling with it. Does that make sense?
It does. The other questions, the, the school nurses that are coming through CHA, is that funded by CHA, or are you funding them? They're just coming from CHA? Or did I hear that wrong?
The funding is by the Cabarrus Health Alliance.
Okay.
Yes.
And the, the last question, this is more of a future question, but given the facility that is coming, this will be for, for school-aged children that are within the county that are receiving inpatient behavioral health. Is there a, where does the educational responsibility fall for that? That's not really a big thing right now, but in about two years, it will be. Is there a model for that, and is it statute?
I don't have a great answer for you. So, it really very much depends on the facility. So, you have some residential mental health hospitals, a psychiatric residential treatment facility, who will act as their own PSU. They may have a certified teacher, and they are, for all intents and purposes, a school unit. Our acute facilities, really, we try to have partnerships with so that we can send work there. There's usually maybe a learning facilitator, but they would stay with us on our roster. So, it's, it kind of depends where they're, where they're going, if that helps at all. It's not a very clear answer, but yeah. We, we rely very heavily on those partnerships and communication to make sure we don't miss any of our kids who are in hospital stays.
Jonathan?
I just had a statement about that. So, I've been in conversation with Representative Scott from Rutherford County, Cleveland County area. He was the chair for the school board there. So, we have actually been talking about and working on legislation that would update the EC formula for funding. So, hopefully, there's going to be some good movement on that. So, just wanted to let you guys know that.
Go ahead.
And I have a, I have a few questions. Being new, I've had the opportunity to sit in a couple of different retreats and hear about some of the different perspectives on education. So, I think my first question is, how did we get here? So, I heard a lot about the, specifically with the social workers, the psychologists, the school counselors. Now, I'm a public school baby, not a Cabarrus County public school baby, but I don't remember that kind of apparatus being a part of public schools. And in all of the retreats, it was, it was pretty much the same. People asking for funding, but not discussing how we got here. So, my question is always, how did we come to need that many people to help our students?
That is a great question, and I think we could have an entire meeting just dedicated to trying to figure that out. I would say, at the surface level, across the nation, we are experiencing a very significant mental health crisis. And we have our students, we have an opportunity to be with them every single day and try to make an impact and try to intervene so that we can prevent tragedies from happening. And we've experienced quite a few, especially recently. And so, I think public schools, right, if we're partnering correctly with families, they should be able to come and ask for resources. They should be educated on knowing the signs of what's going on with their student. And you need a licensed mental health professional in the building to be able to partner with parents in that way, and then either provide direct services to that child, if that's what the family wants, or help them find somewhere to refer to that might be like a higher level of care. I, I remember having a school counselor and a school social worker once in a while that I saw. You know, I think I met with mine, maybe, maybe he wants to talk about college. Or I was crying after some, you know, argument in seventh grade, maybe. But I don't think that there was the level of unmet mental health needs, and our kids were not constantly in crisis like they are now. And so, I think if you can address those mental health needs sooner, one, you have your kids safer and healthier. You have parents that understand and have a partner. And you also have teachers and staff who, they didn't go to school to address the trauma in their classroom. So, if you have the folks on the front end that can support them, you also have teachers that can focus on teaching in the classroom in less mental health and behavioral crises, which is what we're experiencing daily.
Okay. My next question is this. So, we have the charter schools getting 1,944 students. Approximately 194 of those students coming back into our schools. And, I mean, it makes sense, we got to plug the hole. I mean, if they're not educating the student, they shouldn't be keeping the money. I'm all, that just doesn't make sense to me. But my question is this, without those charter schools, do we have space for 1,944 students?
I think we can make space for anything where there's an investment, right? We are a growing county. We are an extremely, I think, attractive place to live, work, and play. And so, you know, I pose that question back to everyone in this room. I think we can make this school district welcoming and open for every single child and family who wants to be here.
Well, I mean, with unlimited funding, we can do anything, of course. However, I'm asking today, there's 1,944 students in charter school. If those charter schools were to close, if we had the legislature said, hey, wait a minute, this isn't really working out, where would we, do we have space for those students?
So, the answer would be yes, because capacity of 1,900 kids coming back, right? You're talking a K-12 spectrum. So, they wouldn't all be in one grade level. They would be across the district, depending on logistically where they are. So, when we just realigned, we kind of balanced our, our capacity across our district. That doesn't mean that we don't have some areas that are tight. So, the northwest part of our county is, is growing rapidly, and, and the population up there is, is very tight. The old elementary, the primary, the middle school and the high school are tight, okay?
Yes.
The southwestern part of the, the, the area, Harrisburg, Hickory Ridge, that area is, is tight as well. So, they would, they would present some challenges, right? But when you look at 1,900 kids, I, you know, the answer would be yes, we could do it. We have roughly 15,000 kids in the elementary, about 15,100 in the elementary, about 8,200 in middle school, and about 11,100, give or take, in the high schools across our district, giving us a total of 35, 161, which is where we sit today. So, we could accommodate it, but it doesn't, it would, it would put more stress on our system in terms of us trying to, when we, when we realigned, we said that we couldn't realign our way out of the growth problem, that we would need to create more capacity. The thing that has saved the district over the last probably 10 years or so are the mobile units that we've put onto our, onto our, on our properties. And, and the commissioners can speak to that, because they, they've been, though, they have been the ones that have supported a lot of that financial investment for us to handle some of that capacity issue. The problem now is we're out of land and room to put any more mobile units in, number one. Number two, they're not the safe option you want to do, and they're not a long-term option. They're a temporary fix. And if you kind of go across our district, you kind of see some of the, the mobiles that exist in, at every, there's about 146 mobile units across the district. So, that's probably more information than you want, but the answer is yes. It would just put more stress on the system.
But it's also a hypothetical. We're not against charter schools. They play a role in innovation.
Absolutely.
So, you wouldn't expect that to happen.
Yes.
It's more, it's more the funding issue and making sure it's fair.
And I'll be very clear, I'm not anti-charter school. I'm not anti-private school. I'm not anti-any school. My job is to advocate for Cabarrus County School System and to tell you that what we have to offer for your child is better than any other option out there. But I'm not opposed to any school. I believe it's a parent's choice to put their child, where they think it's best for their child. But I can tell you that I can advocate strongly for Cabarrus County Schools that if you want to place a child in an educational system to provide access, resource, and opportunities for your child, we're the best option. But I want to be real clear, I'm not against any private or charter school that's out there. They have a role, and if a parent feels that that's their best option, then they should do that. It's a parent's choice where they put their child, and I support that as well as homeschool. I'm not against that. That's a parent's choice and a parent's right.
Of course. The, so the next question would be, what happens, and this is, I just don't know. So, it's close to my heart, because I actually spoke Spanish before I spoke English. Okay? So, a lot of people don't know that. But Spanish was my first language. And when I went to school, no one accommodated that, and I learned English. So, I don't understand the, and I'm asking for understanding, not to, to push. What does the multi-language, or English as a second language teacher do? And how could they be doing it with one in 93 students? So, what are they facilitating?
So, they, we have to prioritize the needs of the students.
Okay.
And we have some students, their level of services vary depending on their language level. So, if you are a newcomer and you have just come into the country, you are going to be, have a higher level of services per day, most likely every day, than a student who may have been here or be receiving services for several years. We have several models for that. For example, the newcomer class will, will get typically a class with that teacher every day. And then the other class periods of the day, we cluster students, and they're pushing in to give them support in their core classes. So, they'll be in there where they can help, do small group instruction, support with vocabulary, especially as we get students who come in from another country, and they have no English, and they're in middle school or high school. We have to give them some additional vocabulary support. They may be very fluent in their current language. We want them to continue to be belligerent, but we have to support them with some of those words and terms. Academic language, they may have some of the language that they pick up at home, but it may not be the same language that they are going to read in a textbook or read on an end-of-grade test.
Okay. Okay, that's good. The, and the last question is, so we know that 194 students come. Do we have a number of, the number of undocumented students that we're servicing also who might show up after that 40 days?
We, we do not collect that data now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a discussion that, if you're adding to it, that's fine. If you have questions, we can save that for the discussion portion. If you've got something to add, please, please do. All right, so let's move on to our next item, our next section.
Thank you, Dr. Roth, the vestual. The next item on the agenda is reforming the school accountability model, and that will be presented by our Chief of Staff, Mr. Dustin Schu.
Thank you guys again this, this evening for being here. Not only our elected officials, but our community members and our staff that are here. Obviously, these are important issues to us, because we all love Cabarrus County and love this community. So, I'm going to talk with you a little bit about something at the greater level, at the state level. This has been part of our legislative agenda for multiple years, and we've seen some traction with this at the legislative level, but it hasn't come to fruition yet. So, it's important to understand our accountability model. North Carolina's plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act outlines how schools receive a school performance grade relating to an A-through-F scale. The current scale almost exclusively uses test scores on statewide assessments that heavily factors in achievement data. And every school in our district values academic achievement, and we understand that our graduation rates and our traditional outcomes are important. However, it's important to keep in mind that the mission of our schools and our school system, it does extend beyond standardized tests and standardized test scores. And so, our recommendation is to adjust school performance grades to offer a more holistic view of school effectiveness. So, we'll take a look at the current setup. What I want to point your attention to predominantly is that proportion of 80/20. 80% of a school's accountability grade is based on academic achievement as it relates to proficiency, while only 20% relates to growth. One thing that's important to keep in mind with that is that we believe strongly that this should be a more equal distribution between achievement and growth. And a common misconception is that by lowering that rate, or that weight of achievement and increasing the weight of growth, that we're somehow asking for less accountability. But what we believe is that we're actually asking for more accountability, because what proficiency captures is whether students meet that at-grade-level standard. And while that is very important, we believe it should continue to be a strong part of this model. What it does not capture is that student who comes in the door multiple grade levels below and never reaches proficiency. But how much closer did they get to proficiency? It also doesn't capture all of the students who walk in the door well above grade level before the school year even starts. And did we push them even further beyond and accelerate their learning more? And so, what we're asking for actually is more accountability by having a more equal distribution here. One thing that I'll point you to is you look at how Cabarrus County fares in relation to the current accountability model. What you'll see is that we fare very well in relation to comparison between the state of North Carolina and charter schools. It's important to see that, if you look at it proportionally, Cabarrus County has three times as many A schools as the rest of the state, and we have about half as many D and F schools as the rest of the state. There's not a significant difference between charter schools and the state as a whole, but there is a significant difference between Cabarrus County Schools and charter schools and state schools. I think this graph is important, number one. It shows the effectiveness and the value of our schools, but it also tells you that we're not asking for changes to the accountability model because we somehow want to inflate our scores or our ratings. The reality is, we're already performing well on this, on these metrics. We just believe strongly that student learning and progress should be more valued as part of this. The last piece that I'll share with you is that it's our recommendation that we adjust school performance grades to offer a more holistic view of school effectiveness. While the current model emphasizes student achievement on state assessments, other factors could be included that would offer a more holistic view of school effectiveness. Some of those, that work has already been done as part of the 2022-through-24 redesign, and included areas such as post-secondary preparation, post-secondary outcomes, extra and intracurricular activities, durable skills, attendance and absenteeism, and school climate. One important note is that we already have metrics for many of these areas that could immediately be put into place, and this would give a more holistic view of the effectiveness, effectiveness of a school's, even beyond traditional state assessment data. At this point, I will pause to see if you have any questions about reforming school accountability model.
Go ahead. Grant?
And we'll start with Mr. Campbell. Yes, sir. Dr. Campbell.
Sorry. And by the way, thank you for letting me participate in casual Monday here. I apologize for that as well. But we kind of talked about this last week, and I think we all agree that growth should be a bigger portion, and we kind of talked about what that portion should be. And I want to kind of put out to everybody, just kind of in preparation, I'm, I'm fine with this in terms of you've got to, we've got to have more of an emphasis on starting line if we're going to measure this appropriately. What I will need, if we're going to start making that change, is who would push back on that? And what would their argument be? Not only to understand both sides of it, but, but I agree that I think that the 80/20, I think like a 70/30, 60/40 model might be better. But I, and I'm kind of professing my own ignorance. I don't know where the pushback would be on that and what the argument would be.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And we'll, we'll absolutely work on getting that information together. Yes, sir.
A lot of that work DPI is doing, right?
Yeah, and so, this, this was a major initiative under the former superintendent of, of the state. That work is, has kind of been paused with obviously a change in that position.
John?
Yeah, I just had a statement. I know we talked about this in the office, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of what you guys asked for is for, you need more resources, right? So, I think a lot of folks can look at this and say, you know, just like Brian said, you know, how do we get here? Well, kids, you know, whenever I was in high school, you know, we had this, this, you know, grade scale that is, and, you know, we had, we had the results that we had. So, now we want to change it so that we can ask for more money, right? I mean, they say 60% of the taxes that we collect go to education, and that is, you know, all education levels, not just K-through-12. So, I think a messaging, because I, I agree, you know. Again, I have two sons that are not on what would be considered grade level. But, right, the growth that we have in a year is, is going to be more important for them, because that's where they are. So, I mean, I think messaging that to people who really aren't paying attention as much as maybe everybody in this room, to, so that they understand, you know, this isn't just moving the goalposts so we look better. And like you said, you're, you're, you know, your scores are already, you know, looking well, but I, I would encourage, you know, just to try to get that messaging out.
That's good feedback. Thank you. Brian?
I haven't heard many complaints about Cabarrus County Schools. I can tell you that. My, my family, we made a decision to homeschool when our children were two. So, we're not protest homeschoolers, right? But I do have a question about moving the, the, the goalposts there, because what seems to happen is when, anecdotally, when I was a kid, to have an A, you had to get a 94. And now it appears you're an A if you're an 85, when you were tinkering on a C when I was a kid. And so, it seems like moving the goalposts, where it's kind of like we're not accepting the challenge to educate kids to level. Instead, we're bringing down the goalposts. Instead, we're bringing down the goalposts. And how will that, because I was thinking about your question, what would the pushback be? If we move that and we begin to celebrate growth that's not to level, a little more, let's say that, how are we really affecting the student? Because if you almost saved me and I was drowning, I drowned. Right? You didn't save me.
Right. Yes, sir.
You came close. I was at 100 feet, you got me to 10 feet, and then I died. Right? So what is, I mean, how does moving that goalposts change everything? Because it seems like everything has changed.
Well, I, I think an important piece of that is to ensure that we maintain achievement as still a strong part of that model. The other piece that I would tell you is that, to use your analogy, we're not rescuing that student from the water in one year, we're rescuing that student over the course of 13 years. And so what growth actually does is it captures, over the course of their career, are we actually rescuing them or are we not? So that student who comes in scoring in the eighth percentile, for instance, well below proficiency, at the end of the year, they score, we, their, their teacher's amazing, they do an amazing job, they score in the 20th percentile. They've surpassed 12% of their peers, they're still not proficient. On the current model, their growth is very lowly weighted in terms of looking at a school's effectiveness. What I would tell you is that teacher is incredibly effective, more effective than their peers. And not only that, but that student, we have, we're, we're closer to rescuing them over the course of that 13-year educational career, which is why we believe growth should be more, more heavily weighted. However, achievement, it's critical that that's a piece of it for some of the same points that you just made. Yes, sir.
And, and number one, I agree with you.
Yes, sir.
The, the reason I ask that is because in this compensation pact, the teacher retention and everything, it's going to, guys, it's going to cost a lot of money. Okay? But in there, I would like to see teachers who are that kind of teacher awarded, compensated for being great. And so I needed to know what would be the pushback on, on that, and that's a great example. Thank you very much.
This is school-focused, so this is rating the school, not the teacher.
No, I, I understood that. I understood that, but it's, it is the same argument in terms of the, the bonuses and the commissions for growth.
Using the same metrics for a teacher.
It's not the same metric, but it's the same argument. Meaning if growth is going to be weighed more for commission, what's going to be the opposition to that? Whether that's for a school, for a teacher, for a football coach, if growth is going to be weighed more, who is going to oppose that? And in my case, I'm asking who would oppose that for a teacher, because that'd be the same argument used against the schools. Yes.
And the only other point that I would note is that this accountability model is created at the state level. It's important to note that while every state had to create a model like this because of the Every Student Succeeds Act, states were left with the autonomy to create it on their own. For instance, in the state of Florida, A schools are schools that have a 55 or higher on their rating scale. Hence, in the state of Florida, there are only eight F schools in the entire state. Conversely, in North Carolina, only 32 to 33% of our schools are As and Bs. We have a very high standard that we set in North Carolina, which we're proud of. Unfortunately, oftentimes, folks don't understand that, and as they look at those accountability models and compare them, they don't realize that while we compete at or above national levels, we oftentimes have a disproportionate number of schools underrepresented for As and Bs and overrepresented for Ds and Fs as, as a, as a direct correlation or direct reflection of the accountability model that we've created. So it's not that we need to do away with it, we simply just need to reform it so that it, and remodel it so that it better, better actualizes the actual school effectiveness that we have.
Excellent. Okay. Do you have the next item too?
Yes, sir. So I'll talk to you a little bit about increasing flexibility and regulatory reform. We're going to focus on three key areas, which are calendar, staffing, and budget flexibility. And what we're asking for is greater flexibility in calendars and regulations so that we can improve student learning and empower districts like Cabarrus County to innovate for student success. We'll start by talking about calendar flexibility, which is an item we've pushed for, for several years as well. We believe it's really important to look at calendar flexibility because it impacts the allowed start date for schools. There are mandated start and end dates for schools in the state of North Carolina. By having more flexibility with our start date, we would be able to administer, or we're able to administer exams prior to winter break, which promotes student academic achievement and wellness. Our own data reflects that since moving our own calendar, we've seen increased student outcomes as a relation to that. You don't get that winter break haze and then come back for the final two weeks of a semester and then to give exams. The other thing is, we have students who are dual-enrolled with community colleges. Without that calendar flexibility, they end up having to live in two worlds, where their first semester classes have ended at a community college, they continue in their first semester high school classes while also enrolling in new second semester community college classes. And the last big impact is for our students who graduate mid-year, students who have met the requirements of the state of North Carolina of Cabarrus County schools, they want to go on to enlist in the armed forces, they want to go on to, to enroll in post-secondary education. Their ability to do that is delayed on the mandated start and end date because they're having to return after winter break, continue with their classes, take final exams while community college and post-secondary educational organizations and institutions are beginning their semester. So it delays their ability to accelerate their own personal outcomes based on a law that was created in large part because of tourism. So that is what we're asking for as it relates. One key point I would make as the last point on here is that some low-performing schools, charter schools and schools with year-round programs are already exempt. That makes up about 20% of the schools in the state of North Carolina. So all we're asking for is the same flexibility that a fifth of schools already have. The next piece that I want to talk with you a little bit about is, is staffing and budget flexibility. And what we're asking for, quite honestly, is we want to have the same flexibility that charter schools have. The charter school movement began in North Carolina in 1996, and it was intended to foster innovation, and it very well has done that. But we believe it's time for all schools to have the benefits of many of those innovations that have been discovered in the charter schools. So as we look at staffing, you've heard about a lot of our staffing challenges, it's a recurrent theme throughout this evening's discussion. So what we're asking for is the flexibility of higher-quality staff outside of their content and licensure area, as many of our brethren in charter schools are able to do. And then the second piece is around budget. We'd like to have the autonomy to utilize funding without bureaucratic restraints and allocate resources based on student needs. And I would point your attention to the graphic on the right. You'll notice that North Carolina is the only state that's color-coded orange. Those color codings are based on how states allocate funding and what, what sort of, what sort of program they use for it, or what sort of system they use for it. And what you'll find is that North Carolina is the only state that uses resource-based and program-based, a combination of those two. In fact, what you'll see is that 41 out of 51 jurisdictions, because Washington DC is its own separate entity, 41 out of 51 use student-based. Student-based is typically lauded for being the most transparent, efficient, and equitable basis for funding. We would love to see movement towards that model. In the meantime, we would love to have the same flexibility that our charter schools have, which is much more focused on student-based funding than traditional. It's important to note that under the current system, North Carolina uses what's called program-based, program resource codes or PRCs. It's how our money is funded to us. There are over 30 of those PRC codes. And what that means is that funding is given in very specific buckets. And so if you have a need that arises out of that bucket, outside of that bucket, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to move funding based on the needs that you have. So it's a very rigid system, a very inflexible system. We also have one of the most complex and hard-to-understand funding models in the entire country. And so we're advocating, on a much larger level, at the state level, advocating to, to look at reforming that. Any questions in relation to those items?
Jonathan?
I know we've had a conversation about the flexibility, the school stuff, and, you know, the, the hurdles that they've faced in the past. What we're seeing right now is a lot of people are running local bills. Like, it seems like almost every county is running their own local bill for flexibility. So I think if that gets enough movement, you know, maybe something will change, but that is an option that we're looking at doing for Cabarrus County.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Jonathan. Anybody else? All right. So our last focus area is school safety. And John Legrand is handling that one, so we'll bring him up to the podium.
And Mr. Legrand is our deputy superintendent. Mr. Legrand?
Thank you, Dr. Capiggi, and good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for being out tonight to be a part of this important conversation. We've been over a, I guess, various topics of importance here tonight, but what I want to talk about is, is our top priority, and that's student and staff safety. And so this evening, I want to focus on two main items. If we could go to the next slide, please. And that is providing resource officers, or school resource officers, or SROs, on every campus and upgrading aging facilities to meet modern security standards. So I'll start with SROs first. SROs on every one of our Cabarrus County school campuses has been a key part of our safety efforts here in our county for the past several years. However, if we go to the next slide, please. For the 24-25 school year, the amount that we received from the Center for Safer Schools Safety Grant for our SROs has been decreased more than $200,000. And that decrease was due to an overall increase in the amount of school districts that are now applying for this SRO grant. We were quick to the game and have enjoyed that for several years. However, many of our surrounding counties around the state have caught on to that, and they are also applying for that same grant. And so that same amount in that grant is now being divided into several more segments, and everybody's getting a smaller piece of the pie, so to speak. And so the new allocation process, because of that increase, is now, is, is based on an overall student enrollment. So we're just getting based on our 35,000-plus kids as opposed to other districts that may have more or less kids. So this year's decrease, if, if we were to put it in numbers, taking into account that $200,000 less, it amounts to a deficit of $490,829.79 to fund all, to fund full-time SROs at each of our elementary and middle schools here in the county. Our, our high school SROs are funded differently, and we are very thankful for our, our local law enforcement. They provide those as an in-kind service for our high school SROs. But in order to have them at every middle and elementary school, we must make up a def, we've got a deficit there of almost a half a million dollars. The other aspect that I want to touch on in our ongoing safety efforts is bringing our aging buildings up to modern safety, security standards. And this is, this, as you can imagine, we've, we've got several aging buildings here, just to be exact. We have nine buildings that are over the age of 40, and we've got eight buildings that are over the age of 50. You can imagine when they were built, there were different standards, there were different thoughts about school security during that time. And at this point, we're playing catch-up to try to ensure that each of the buildings, regardless of age, is equipped with the same modern safety and security standards that, that each of our, that even our newest buildings have. And so those are the, those are the two main priorities for us as we're talking about student safety.
Okay. Jonathan?
Just curious, what, what are some of the differences between, say, Roberta Road and one of the schools that's older than I am?
So, great question. So if you've ever been to Roberta Road, Roberta Road is, is in a, under, the, all the classrooms in all the school area is under one roof. There, there's no going outside of a building.
Mr. Legrand, if we could, I'd like to have that conversation off record, just for the safety of kids. I don't want to expose where all the issues are.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to touch on the open concept, and we want to make sure that buildings that have multiple buildings, you know, we want to make sure that we have safety and security at those, those places as well.
It's, it's a great question. Again, I just don't want to make us vulnerable to anything. Thank you. And to our commissioners as well, if there are any questions, if you, after the meeting, we can hopefully answer those.
Grant?
What is the credentialing process for an SRO? Do they have to be a credentialed law enforcement officer? Is there a different pathway? And, and I'll tell you why, why I'm asking this. Is there a pathway that could be military police coming out of the, the military that are now entering the civilian world? Do they have to get a civilian credentialing, law enforcement credential to be an SRO? Is there a separate pathway? I'm just looking for a pipeline solution here.
They are all sworn police officers that are assigned to our schools through their police departments. So some of our SROs come off of the streets, so to speak, and, and are out in the, doing the, the regular police work and go to being an SRO. Some of our SROs leave the school after, let's say, after a school year, and they rotate out to being out and doing the public work. So they, they are, it's the same credentials for an SRO or any other policeman.
Do they have to be an employee of a county law enforcement agency? Like, I guess, could they come here, like, do they have to start in a law enforcement agency in the, in the county and then get hired as an SRO? Can they come independently as an SRO if they have the proper credentials?
They are, yes. They are employees of the police agency that is, that the school is in, within that jurisdiction. For example, our schools that were within the city of Concord, they have Concord Police Officers as SROs. The ones that are outside the city, we have the, the county police officer from the Sheriff's Department are the SROs that are assigned to those buildings. Hope that answers your question.
Right. Yep. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Legrand.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion. I do want to start by saying, again, the folks on the table here all play a role, all play a role, and we are a top-notch, notch school system, and that doesn't happen by accident. That happens because of the leadership, it happens because of the focus on student outcomes. And we have a partnership with our county, that the funding that we don't get on the state level, or the funding that we don't get at the federal level, they've got to come up with that. And as we were just talking about SROs, and we have more SROs in our schools than most, a lot of police forces. We have more nurses than most medical practices. They hire, they, they have, we have a lot of local staff that aren't allocated by the state, and that helps us to support our school choice program, which we're abired by many other districts. School student support that we talked about earlier, administration, administration positions, and of course, the supplement that helps us attract and keep our quality teachers. This work, you, you all, we all know this, this work is important, and this is our next generation. So it's critical for the future of our students that we do the right thing here and, and do what we can to, to help our school system thrive. And I guess there are challenges. I mean, there's a lot of challenges that we're facing, and one of those is facilities. We have over a billion dollars' worth of capital needs here. I mean, we have, we might be a high-wealth county, but I, I think we would very much struggle to try to find funding to, to fund all the needs here. So with that, I will open it up to every, everybody here on, at the table have an opportunity to, to contribute to our conversation. I do want to start with our legislative committee, so Mr. Mills and Ms. Freeman, I'll start with you guys.
Sure. I don't, I don't have any specific questions since I've been a part of this process for, you know, a few weeks now. I do want to say that I did look through some of the bills that are currently being run. And I do want to thank Dr. Campbell, you're already on a bill to revive retired teachers for high-need schools. And so I appreciate that. And you spoke to the calendar flexibility. Currently, 12 local bills, just exactly like what you said. We'd love to see Cabarrus County run as, as one of those local bills. And then I'm super interested in that recruitment and retention omnibus bill, omnibus bill that you're working on there. Love to talk to you more about that when you get a chance.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman?
I think they went ahead and jumped the gun on any of my questions, which I'm, I'm glad to see that they're hitting the ground running. And I think we're all on the same page as far as where we need to go. So I'm, I'm very pleased with, with the questions and the, the presentations that we've had tonight. I would, and I may have some questions as far as the accountability model, as far as that goes, but that will be to our group here later. I, I just want to see, if we change accountability models, the people need to see exactly how those di- models, the people need to see exactly how those different parts will, will be graded. It doesn't need to be grouped in a 50 and a 50. It needs to be, um, specifics so that pe- parents can actually tell. When we transition, they need to be able to see that part move over here. That, that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. And, um, there was another term in there that I was not sure how that would be measured, is school climate. Not really sure how that gets weighed, but those, those are my questions for later. Thank you.
Ms. Husker.
I just want to say thank you. It, it really appears that you've hit the ground running, like Ms. Freeman said, and I just, I really appreciate the questions you've asked, also the conversations you've already been having. Um, I, I just, I really appreciate that you're thinking about our kids and, and what we can do for them. Um, Mr. Alman, you had mentioned that you'll be coming up against deadlines. What are your deadlines? How can we support you?
I can get you those dates. I can't remember them off the top of my head. I know it's a, an April, I believe. Um, local bills close earlier than statewide bills, so...
Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Now, but let me, let me make that clear. It's, you have to submit it to be drafted by Thursday. It doesn't have to be complete by Thursday. Sorry.
And you do plan on, you plan on doing that? You do plan on doing that?
The local bill?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, it's, I think it's pretty...
Thank you.
Pretty elementary, what everybody's doing, so... Correct.
Yeah, you can submit for drafting.
Yeah, we can do all that. I think everybody, I, I know myself, I am, uh, coming off of four days with the kids being home, so I, I'm expecting that, uh, we'll have one day in school out of the last 10, so I'm kind of hunkering down for the snow, so...
Anything else? Chairman Measor, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, and I can say I, I feel confident that, uh, these three representatives are going to be doing a great job in Raleigh for us. Um, I was in their offices last week in Raleigh, and they spent plenty of time with, uh, myself and Cabarrus County staff, and really wanted to hear from us and appreciated our visit. So, um, thank you very much for representing us well, and, um, you know, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lindsay, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's nice to be here again. Um, I definitely appreciate our state representatives. I'm very proud of the work that you guys are doing, uh, very thankful for that. Um, I did write a few things down, just because y'all know me. I'm going to bring up some things that probably aren't quite the fluff that, that we're all talking about, but I did want to kind of mention with some of these presentations that we've been talking about, um, and the per pupil spending, some of the things that we've been listening to on a federal level, um, regarding spending. Um, you know, our country is ranked 40th out of 40 countries in education, but we also have the highest PPE, um, out of all of those, uh, different countries. And so I do think, um, not to say that, uh, per pupil spending is not important, but I would like to see a correlation with how much per pupil spending we're doing and how that relates to, uh, the academic performance of our children. Um, I think it was brought up that there's about a $10 million difference between Cabarrus and Union, but how does that equate grade-wise? Like, how do we perform, um, in comparison to them? So I think, you know, moving forward, even though, as you guys brought up, and I certainly appreciate you, you bringing this up, um, years ago, when we were in school, many years ago, when we were in school, um, we certainly didn't have all of these things. And I guess one could say, is it social media that has, um, changed the, the way that students relate to each other? I don't know the answers to that, but there's a lot of information out there that would kind of correlate those things. Um, but I do want to make sure that regardless as to how we're spending on these children, that we're doing it in a way that is going to equate to better academic performance. So, but anyway, thank you, guys. I appreciate you very much. I know you're working very hard already, um, and I appreciate, uh, you Chairman Walter for allowing us to come and speak.
I appreciate you being here. Larry, you've had a lot of experience in the State House, but welc- welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just got nothing to do with all this, but I thought it was interesting to find out that Representative Campbell has my old phone number when I was in the house.
You better watch out, Grant.
So I know how to call you anyway, you know. Um, I could say some stuff that would not be appreciated by most of this group, I guess, so I won't say a lot of it, but a few things I would like to point out. I graduated high school in 1972, and I dare say, a lot of people in this room weren't even born then. So you don't have the direct firsthand knowledge or opportunity to observe the difference in this society from then to now that I've had. Uh, and I will say that some of the things I'm hearing are indications of the decline of our society. I never heard of a guidance counselor or anything like that until I was in high school. We had one in a school that, uh, let's see, by the time I graduated, it was 1,850 students in that school. And that was just 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. We didn't have all these psychological professionals in schools. We didn't need them. We weren't raising generations of people that are so upset over little minor things like they are today. We didn't need that kind of attention. And it's sad to me to hear that y'all think they need it now, and maybe they do more than we did back then. I was born, hmm, about nine years after World War II, okay? And the society was a lot different back then. And I think, nothing you can do about it right now, but I think one of the worst things that's happened to our society was when I was in the second grade, and it wasn't my grades, but when they ended prayer and Bible reading in the schools. Now, I read, maybe they, I mean, they do teach history differently nowadays than they did when I was in school, so maybe they didn't teach y'all this, but when I was in school, I learned that the Northwest Ordinance that was signed into law by President Thomas Jefferson stated that if, that you couldn't even be a territory of the United States unless your schools taught the Bible and religion. We threw that away, and the decide, the society has declined steadily ever since. That's why you're having a lot of these problems that you're facing in schools now that we didn't face when I was in school. I think we need to think about that. I think a lot of the problem is parents not disciplining their kids and teaching them at home like they did when I was a kid. That's not the school's fault, but it's a problem you've inherited, you know, and I'm sorry for you about that. As a minister, I've tried for years to convince people to do better with their own kids than that, you know? But small church pastor, now I'm retired and preaching it of even smaller churches than I ever had when I was a regular pastor, um, I've had little opportunity to reach a big crowd about it. We need to get back to the Lord. This nation was founded on the gospel of Jesus Christ. Patrick Henry said that. I bet they don't teach that in the schools anymore. I'll get off that. I mean, that's just, it's sad to me to even think we have to have all this psychological stuff in the schools now.
Appreciate you.
Then the thing about, uh, SROs and safety in the schools, I hear you. I feel that need. We really need better safety. And I love the SROs. I think they're great. But think about it. If somebody gets the bright idea to attack the school, and they know the first thing they have to do is take out that SRO, then they got another gun to work with, who's going to protect anybody in that school while you're waiting for the police department or the sheriff's office to get there?
Can we keep the safety discussions off, off?
Okay. Well, we can talk about it later. I just, I tried to do something about that, and it wasn't allowed. Okay, thank you.
We're certainly, we're willing to listen to you. Uh, don't, but thank you. We'll move over across to Ms. Lancaster.
I just left teaching high school late 2021, and I personally did witness a lot of the anxiety. Students, I had students that couldn't even walk from one side of the library to go to the bathroom. They had so much anxiety. So Laura, I do think it's a lot of social media, but it is in our schools, especially high schools and middle schools. Um, it does affect student learning, so it is something that we do have to address. And second of all, I agree with everything Mr. Schu said. Um, there's never enough money, you know? But a lot of what he recommended is not going to cost money, I don't think. Um, as far as North Carolina being the only, one of two orange states on that model of the different pots of money, how you can organize that or use that, I mean, to me, I don't know why in the world we haven't fixed that before. So a lot of the, um, reforming accountability, the flexibility, I don't think that's going to cost money. So I think that could maybe be easy fixes for y'all. And I do appreciate you all being new up there, because I feel like you will listen to people more so than someone that's been up there for several years, and you will, we will hold you more accountable, okay? Thank you, though, for the job you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore.
We weren't sure our mic was working. Is it working? Okay. Um, you know, I was that poor beginning teacher, too. I wasn't able to afford my apartment. I had to share apartment with two other teachers. Um, but I knew I was going to get a raise every year because I had a step. Um, and those steps are gone now. I think, what is it, every five years? Um, also, we couldn't wait till our 10th year to get longevity, and now that's gone. Um, luckily, I had my advanced degrees before 2014, um, and my advanced degrees did help me be a better teacher, counselor, because I got those degrees while I was in my work, um, setting. So I was able to apply it right there. You know, it's very discouraging, um, to have things taken away and taken away. It does lower the morale, and it does cause teachers to want to leave the profession. Dr. Grant, I was glad to hear you say the veteran teacher, because those young beginning teachers do depend on us. And I don't think mentors get paid anymore, do they? So it is out of the goodness of our hearts, which was one of the things I really enjoyed, was mentoring teachers and counselors. Um, and being supervising teachers of student teachers that we don't get compensated for either. Um, bonuses, I am all for bonuses for third grade teachers because that's a hard grade. But let's remember, K2 teachers give them the foundation for third grade. So I'm for bonuses, but we need to share them amongst the people who play a role. Also, I could not have done my job without teacher assistance. And I think sometimes we forget what they do for our K3 kids. Health benefits, I'm hearing, you know, I, I'm very fortunate that I had free insurance, which now as high as insurance is, that's a real plus. Um, and now as a retiree, I have it. Um, so I, I don't understand all the benefits of the health benefits of our beginning teachers, and I don't know where that really comes from, but we do need to think about our beginning teachers and health benefits. Um, y'all probably have all three heard me say before, when I retired, I had not gotten a raise the last seven years. Um, so that is discouraging people from staying in the profession. Um, so I would like, so after my 28th year, I never got another raise. I think I got a $350 bonus, which was taxed, and, um, yeah, it turned out to be about 150. And the same with my supplement. Once I put supplements in with my checks, that got taxed very heavily, too. Um, so, you know, let's encourage our teachers to stay in this profession. Let's give them what they deserve. But thank you, three, for coming, and thank you for listening to us, and you will probably be hearing more from us, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Tredaway?
Yes. Pardon me. Uh, thank you. I have to apologize, uh, as a disclaimer. I'm a recovering public school administrator, so, uh, I, I just want to, uh, over our presentations, I jotted down a few things. I want to, I guess I want to clarify a few things at the school level, at the student level, at the classroom level. I started my educational career in Union County, right on the North Carolina-South Carolina line. We didn't lose any teachers to South Carolina, but we gained a lot of teachers from South Carolina. I still have a lot of friends in that area. It's not that way anymore. It's not that way. In fact, about the only ones from South Carolina that crossed the line to teach in North Carolina now are the ones that retired in South Carolina and are double-dipping in another state system. So we've lost ground. We, we've lost ground, and that predates any of our arrivals, but we've lost ground. The other thing, and, and Dr. Grant, you, or Dr. Campbell, you mentioned that, uh, the, the retirees coming back and that retention, that whole notion of retention there. Uh, when I unsuccessfully tried to retire, uh, I kept coming back and doing interims in our, in Cabarrus County schools. And then the legislature, uh, uh, in its wisdom, limited those folks to 30 hours a week. I'm a school principal. How do you do that 30 hours a week? Court, so what we're asking our folks is to work full-time, get paid part-time, you know, for the, for that. So that's something that we can, I, I would think would, would, would be a big help. We lost a lot of those retired teachers coming back to help us at that point. They can go to charter school or a private school and get paid full-time. Um, we've talked about the formula in arrears for teacher allotment. On the ground, I just want to, just make sure you understand that if you're allotted 20 teachers, and after that 40-day average, you gain a spot, you gain an allotment, guess what? You got to call Johnny's parents and tell Johnny, you know this teacher that you fell in love with for three months? You're not going to be in that class anymore. That's how it, it impacts real people. Uh, so the, the whole arrears model, and at the middle school, you've got teaming, and you have to rearrange schedules at the high school level. So even when we get those slots, it's really, it's so disruptive. And when we're limited with social workers and psychologists and all of those things, and we have to start working at multiple schools, we're paying people to drive. We're paying people to schedule student crises when we're in the building kind of thing. And so it's, it's not just that, uh, there's a lot of stuff behind the numbers that at the grassroots, I, I just want to make sure we, we, we don't lose track of that kind of thing. You've heard a lot about caseload, especially when we were talking about, uh, our exceptional children's teachers, paperwork is, and psychologists and all that. So I think a lot of us, we think of the, when we talk about caseload, we think that this is how many kids they teach. It's not just what they teach, but the paperwork is onerous, is onerous. And I guess that's the last thing I want to say, is that there's been some very good questions. I've been very impressed with how used to your questions have been, which speaks to your, you know, intentionality here. Almost all of your questions are grounded in regulations that we deal with. And Mr. Pittman, you was talking about graduating in 1972. That predates special education. That predates Americans with Disabilities Act. Just to mention two things, that a lot of what we've talked about tonight were, are regu-, you know, regulatory from that. So a lot of McKinney-Vento, I mean, that's fairly recent compared to those two. So a lot of the things that we're, we're dealing with, that we're, we are regulated, many of the things, in fact, the ones I just mentioned, we don't control. I mean, that's at the federal level. So we are really working hard to do what we can with what we have. And, um, I just appreciate how much, again, your intentionality, you're looking for solutions. I, I so appreciate that. Um... looking for solutions. I so appreciate that. And so many of the regulations that we deal with that were so well-intentioned had a lot of unintention consequences. For example, if you're grading a school just on the percentage of kids that are at grade level, what's the incentive for those rare teachers that we can find going to the neediest schools? You're almost discouraging, I mean, not you, we are discouraging the best teachers from going where we need them the most, because it's a lot easier to go to those schools that come from communities that are better prepared for learning. So anyway, thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Tredaway. Well, Dr. Piki will give you the last word on this discussion.
Hold on, before he has the last word, because I don't want the last word.
I'll bring, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
The, I think that, you know, after listening to the presentations, number one, I met with Dr. Piki and some others, top-notch, okay, top-notch folks, top-notch presentation. But I am left with a lot of questions, and I'm the type of person who has to ask questions because I think that's how we get answers. So in 1975, the illiteracy rate amongst our black students was 1.6%. It was a statistical zero for white students. I need to know what happened starting then that got us to today, because we're asking, and what I'm really asking for is not to be the arbiter, but I'm asking you to prepare me to argue on our behalf, because I want to bring back everything that we can possibly can to the benefit of Cabarrus County. So I'm not pushing on any of the presentation. I need to be prepared because, for instance, I'm still floored with the idea of 13% of our students are disabled, right? Exceptional, what are you, exceptional students? I'm floored by that in that we're asking that, and we're saying that that needs to be lifted. It needs to be more. So I don't have an answer for that because I'm in shock. And then the last thing, and Dr. Piki, I know you'll be able to address all of these things, you know, you have 95,000, 92,000, 88,000. That's the average teacher pay in California, New York, Massachusetts. Every single one of those states have a teacher shortage. So there's something going on besides money that's keeping people from being in a profession. And I have personally two friends who are teachers in Cabarrus County. One was out of school for a month with a concussion, and there was no police report filed. Another one was out of school for six days. And that goes back to what I believe Mr. Pittman was saying. What kind of disrespect are we breeding in our community that a teacher would be assaulted by a student? So in addition to getting the money and all of that kind of stuff is in here, all of the bonus, the reinstatement for master's pay, all of that has to happen for our community, but if we got to 95,000 and some other things don't change or other conversations aren't had, we'll still just be paying teachers good and still have a big shortage and face the same problems that we're having today, just with better-paid teachers. So those are the questions that I need to be prepared to answer and argue on our behalf. And I say argue, meaning, you know, I have to persuade my colleagues, we have to persuade our colleagues, because really, we're one county, to let us have a bigger piece of the cake, because they all have, they're in a meeting like this, too, and they're going to come with arguments for a piece of cake. So how do we get the cake for Cabarrus County? So that's the nature of my questions. I'm trying to be equipped to win on our behalf. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Brian.
Yep. So I would say, you know, I appreciate that, and I would, and I welcome the questions, because I think the questions start conversation, and conversation, I think, and dialogue and honest back and forth creates solutions. But we always try and be solution-minded when we're coming to the table with anything. I'm a realist. I'm not naive enough to think that you're going to go up to Raleigh and come back to Cabarrus County and get us millions of dollars. I understand that.
They're not going to let me?
Yeah.
We're going to try.
Try. We will continue to try to change that world together. So I appreciate that, and I do value everyone here, especially in elected capacity, our board, the commissioners, state representatives, because you've took the courage to go out there, run for office, become elect, and then take that responsibility. And I do admire and respect that immensely. So appreciate you being here this evening, but I will say this, and not that, I don't want to beat a drum here, but I can tell you that our challenges from a student wellness and a mental health point of view is, you know, I'm a little older, too. I've seen a lot. I won't say I've seen it all, but I have not seen mental health challenges in schools in my entire career like I have lately. And I don't know if it's, well, I'll take that back. I do believe a part of it is parenting. I do believe part of it is social media. I do believe there are a lot of things that are coming in there, and I do believe probably religion plays a big piece of it as well. So I would concur on the various pieces of the things that are causing some of the problem. Nevertheless, they're coming to our door and they're in our rooms. I will strongly say, and I believe it 100%, if you want to retain teachers, pay them. We, I hear what you're saying, and I think there are other incentives that we can talk about, and I agree with that, but they need to be paid more. And I just think we need to keep advocating for that and making sure that we can retain those that we do have. And I do believe that if the salaries were increased, that we would be able to have a larger pool to select from. And I think that other incentives, and I know you have a lot of creative ideas, Brian, I've talked to you specifically about some of those, and I would encourage you to pursue them, because I think they're meaningful and they can help us. But I'll end with, you know, historically, we talked a lot about different things, and I think we all know this, but I'll end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson. "If the children are untaught, the ignorance and vices will in future life cost us much dearer in their consequences than would have done in their correction by a good education." Our obligation is to educate our children, and we have to make sure that that investment is there. And I think everybody here in this room is 100% invested in making sure that we do that. We can have our differences. We can have differences of how we get about and what those solutions are, but our problems are real, and we need everybody in this room and in our community to continue to advocate for our children. If we do that, we'll continue to have a great system here at Cabarrus County. And make no mistake, we will continue to focus on improving, because we don't have all the answers, and we're not where we want to be. To your point on the literacy, that's a great conversation that we continue to have. But I can tell you that we have to make sure we're investing in our teachers and our students and providing that great education so that we can stop some of the problems that have, that have become part of our society. And I look forward to work with all of you in the future, and I thank our board, and I thank our county commissioners, and I thank our state representatives and our audience for being here this evening. I also thank the staff behind me, because, you know, it's not silly to say, I sit on the shoulders of giants. These folks carry me every day, and I appreciate the work that they do, and I think that was exhibited this evening, so I thank them as well. Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Dr. Piki. This conversation doesn't end with this meeting. The goal here was to have some relationship building, to get to know each other a little bit better, some information sharing, which we've started. I'm sure people have written down all the questions that have been asked here. We will get that out to everybody. Again, our goal here was to see, making sure that we communicated to you what our CCS priorities are, and I hope we've done that well. And then really, let's look for common ground and collaboration. So with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Husker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tredaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night to our audience.